Gets out of the evening and I'm waiting with my buddy. And uh, walk in and the bridesmaids already lined up like they are back. So my buddy stopped to sign the book and the one, the one bridesmaid. I think you should just go. So we had to go around the bridesmaids to get into the. We made it by like forty-five second. But like it was, I'm, I'm there. He, oh no, it wasn't. They took him out. And like two on and two out. Like he blows this win. I'm not. Well, maybe we'll go to reception. I'm not going. Got out of the evening. That's Tommy Antway. By the way, if you're gonna lose, lose eight nothing. Don't waste your bullpen. Don't, no, no hangover. It wasn't.
Listen, every time they've lost it, they come back. The next day.
It's, it's better to lose eight nothing than one nothing.
My dog is both heads tax. At least that's the one favor the body knows. Exactly.
Morning, everyone. It is now ten AM. We ask you agreeable to. A rise from the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance before we convene the commissioner's public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, thank you for your incredible power and work in our lives, your goodness and blessings. Your great love, mercy, and care and kindness that you shower us daily. And Lord, as we reflect on our spirit, we recognize we have a human body that often suffers with illness and disease. As we remember October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We ask that you'll be with those that are suffering. We pray those that are afflicted will have their health completely restored. Comfort them and remove all fear and replace it with faith, strength, and courage. We pray that during the month, awareness will be circulated and testing completed. May the early detections of this horrible disease receive immediate help. But those loved ones will be with us for many years. Let each of us be a support system when called upon with an open ear, a shoulder to lean and cry on, and a pillar of strength and prayer for them. We ask that your direction pilot us, your hand protect us, and your wisdom instruct us daily. We ask for your guidance over our meeting this morning. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic which has passed, one nation under God, and in it is all liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone. This time we'll convene our convention's public meeting. And we'll ask for approval in minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make motion. I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Do any public comments on ten items only at this time?
None online.
Thank you. Hey, moving on, uh, we have awards.
There's really nobody here. We're just gonna. Okay. Read it. If you'd like me to read it or do you want?
Turn it over to commissioners who have been at this time.
Okay, so um, we met last Friday at the prison because of the guards that got these awards. Were, they actually end their day at seven AM. So the warden didn't want to try to get them to have to then show up at a public meeting to get the award. So uh, commissioners met at prison and uh, handed out these awards, but we wanted to do a follow-up in, in the public meeting. So following individuals were recognized with a job well done award for their quick response to a medical emergency which saved the life of an inmate. Sergeant Monica Laird, CO Zachary Bear Baylor, CO Jonathan Hamm, CO Math- Matthew Vogel, CO Evan Young, CO Michael Gross, CO Shane Bastress, and CO Justin Whitmire. Uh, the award was presented with a pin along with the letter, the letter of congratulations. Congratulations on your selection, the job well done award in accordance with the county's award program for employees policy number five oh eight. We are being recognized. You are being recognized for your professionalism, exceptional performance, and steadfast dedication to ensure the safety and security of the staff and inmates at the Lycoming County Prison. Warden Shoemaker has relayed to the commissioners the competent and effective manner in which you handled the medical emergency and which saved the life of, of an inmate on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Your quick response to his, to this medical emergency is very impressive and seeks highly to the, your leader, leadership skills, speaks highly to your leadership skills, excuse me. Knowledge, dedication, and work ethic. The commissioners and the county of Lycoming personally gratefully, personally grateful for your professional response in the time of crisis as well as the example you set for other staff to follow and therefore decidedly approve this award. The action you took that day reflects greatly upon yourself and the Lycoming County Prison. So we'd like to thank them all.
Absolutely. Want to thank them. Just incredible action to save a life. Anything you want to add?
No, just one of the, I'm sure it wasn't the warden who said it, but one of the, the people said, um, you know, just a reminder to the guys, because this is, they're the night shift guys. That's why we were there at seven AM, because they were just leaving. And um, you know, there's a a, a lot of everyone's jobs, but their job in particular, some of it becomes routine. And you know, why they're doing this? Why are we doing, we do this every day and there's, you know, it's just the routine of checking and checking. And he's like, this is why. You know, there's a reason. You never know why it's going to come into play. And it came into play today or, or on that day. And um, so that is, i- i- it's, you know, we're appreciative and it is a reminder of, of the important things we do every day that, that become routine, but there's a reason we do. And um, because they did it. Um, they saved a life. So it was a, you know, it could have been a terrible day and it ended up being a good day.
Thank you. Moving on, bid opening. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, so we had one bid, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Consultant, and we received four responses. Um, IEM, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Integrated Solutions Consulting, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. Michael Baker International, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and five cents. And Wit O'Briens LLC, one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Information items. Right, I'm sorry, reports.
The commissioners presented for your ratification or invoices due through October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four to be paid on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of four million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, twenty point nine percent is coming from the general fund. Uh, one point two nine percent is coming from Act thirteen. Uh, other grants is over half of fifty-four point six one percent. And then our RMS is uh, over a million at twenty-three point one nine percent. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Question accepts.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
To information items.
Morning Jenny.
Sure.
Waiting for a presentation.
Oh, it's working.
I'm just staring at you.
All right.
Well, while we wait for that, um, morning commissioners, I wanted to interview Michelle Christina, um, from BRS, Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions. She's our consultant for the Brownfield program. So we just have a quick presentation for you today, um, that's required for the beginning of the action item later on in the agenda. So as you know, um, this is our third in our, uh, third EPA grant, um, for the Brownfield program. And we've been here before to talk to you about brownfields, but essentially what we're looking at here, there any property that is underutilized for a very, for a brine decrease inside. If it's real or perceived, uh, the first they've received, um, the perception of environmental. So in the past, we've looked at, you know, former gas stations and vacant buildings, underutilized sites that might have. Um, and we've used that information in the past to do, um, a ground building. Yep. And like I said earlier, this is our third R S EPA, we were awarded eight hundred thousand dollars eighteen, uh, to set up our first revolvement program. The Brownfield program. Essentially, we have grant funds to be used to award out on by both loans and grants to help in our whole contamination. Great. And because this is a new program for us, we have a lot of leeway with how we want to set up our program. Um, some communities have, um, a redevelopment authority or another organization that deals with a lot of industrial redevelopment. But here we're actually running this program in campus. It's a partnership between our planning department, the open health, um, departments as well. And we've hired, um, Michelle's group, BRS, to the environmental to, to be the environmental professional to review the projects that come forward. So we have, we worked on this project for a while and we have a committee that's helped, that's helping us identify sites up to one brownfield or four. And you know, throughout the last couple of years, we've been trying to find a site, really the, the one that's really come to the top is the one support ballpark project. I see Jason, thank you. It's here from the chamber. Thanks for coming in. Uh, we'll let you say a few things about the project as well. Uh, but essentially it is a redevelopment of the whole city dump. I saw dry pot by pretty much every day. It's just that it may feel very now on a couple of different, um, things. Um, the chamber has plans to turn this into, um, competitive softball fields. Um, so we're excited to be able to recommend, um, the ballpark to. Choose better. With that, I'll turn it over to Michelle. She'll talk about some of the specifics of the program.
So, um, the fill-in that's in front of you for consideration later is a six hundred and, I'm sure I can number it right, seventy thousand dollar loan. Um, there is an element of principal forgiveness in it. Uh, hundred ninety thousand dollars. So it's serving as a grant as well. Um, the chamber is providing a hundred sixty thousand dollar match. That match is required by the terms and conditions of the grant. Um, so as Jenny said, this is going to be a one and done project for the space of the grant. Um, and it'll allow Lycoming County to close out EPA grant. Um, and the idea is once those loan funds are repaid, do another project, it revolves. So if there's other projects in the future. So this is the, uh, proposed redevelopment, um, sure Jason can say a few words on that. Uh, but it is, uh, going to be turf field, uh, with six different ball fields jammed on that one small space. I think it's twenty-eight acres full. And there's going to be a concession stand, some other supportive. The proposed use of the county's loan fund is to basically ready the site for stormwater management. As this is a landfill, like you're not going to want all that water percolating through that dump. There is a three-foot cap that is protecting, uh, folks from exposure to any contamination. But I want to make sure that the, the surface water runoff is collected and appropriately managed. So what your money's doing is to make the grading at the earthwork needed to support, uh, the stormwater management system that will be constructed. And this project is important in that this money is funding the very first phase of this project. So this is the first money in, first money out. Um, so it's important to start as soon as we can, uh, to, to beat the weather with the construction schedule. Purpose also of me being here today is to, to answer any questions we're serving. As Jenny said, we're hired by the county um, to serve as outsourced compliance experts. Yay. Uh, revolving loan fund is a very weird grant in that it's a combination of finance, the loan, fiscal program laid in with super fun, uh, environmental contamination requirements. So um, we're prepared to help with compliance. We'll be doing inspections to make sure that the prevailing wage date is taken. His box is checked, um, that everything's done according to, uh, what it needs to be done, how the service lays on. To make sure that the work is going to be, um, up to their requirements as well. Um, and so one of the things we also need to do is a requirement of this money sourced is to have a public meeting to discuss the cleanup, the alternatives that were evaluated and make sure if there are any comments from the public or anyone that they've had a chance to, to ask those questions, raise those concerns, and have those concerns and questions addressed. To be very transparent with the work that's. Um, so the, the considerations that we looked at were basically no alternative, didn't do anything. Um, that of course isn't really acceptable because you wouldn't be able to do the construction if you just didn't address the stormwater runoff. It would still stay as a landfill. Then the other option that we looked at was doing stormwater indication issues which help allow it to be developed, but there isn't really that much. You're not going to be building huge buildings on top. So, so that's something that, that was looked at too. This is really the best alternative for the cleanup plan. Um, so the next steps is today, the public comment on cleanup plan. So, uh, if any comments or questions, uh, Jenny and I are here to answer them. There is, uh, later on in the agenda, a fiction item for consideration by the commissioners to authorize the loan. As Jenny indicated, has gone through the approval of the finance committee. Uh, they've approved it and so we're here to present it today. Um, after it's authorized, there's the entry of loan agreements. Um, so our the under review. Um, and then we'll have the construction kickoff meeting. Um, and then they'll begin construction and doing the compliance checks and oversight and to be done pretty soon, uh, with this so that, you know, again, it gets it in, now we're done. All good. Uh, and then you guys get some nice new ball fields for some travel. The next slide. Are any questions, comments?
Thank you. Uh, we invite Jason to come up and talk about the project overall.
I have, I have one general stupid question before we go. I know back in the day when the, you know, gas stations, you mentioned when they used to just dump everything in the ground. Are there lots of, are there properties that are just unreclaimable? I'm not saying locally, but just in general.
In general, no. I mean, it's always a question of how much money. They're so bad, that's when the EPA steps in and will do, um, cleanup under.
Okay. Okay. I just want.
Saxon funds from the US EPA to look at those sites that seem, you know, based off of pretty huge use. Here is a gas station or maybe a tangerine, we get that. Does that pass you as a development order? So what do you need to do to, um, get the site back into the. Usually when you have a little site, you know, there's a underground storage tank and do a, um, environmental such assessment, figure out, was that properly closed out or maybe it's still there and that needs to be addressed.
But brownfield doesn't always mean contaminated, right? It's just.
It could be the perception.
Perception.
It's run down, but maybe.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but there have been a lot of sites we've looked at that we've done the assessment. That's a huge relief and also allows sales to go through real estate insurance.
Okay, thank you.
So for the public, can't quite pinpoint where this location is. Go up the highway and you go past, uh, web communications. It's, it's property there with all the big rocks. It's along, sits along the height. That piles of big rocks there, so.
Yep.
Uh, if you want to speak on it, uh, what we're doing is, uh, for those who may not be familiar with the site, it is the former Sussman Supply property prior to, uh, us acquiring it. Uh, there's also ten acres that, uh, was owned by a, a family within the community, uh, that was also part of this. Um, this entire area was used as a city dump up until the seventies. It was filled and completed, uh, after Agnes. They put all of the debris from Agnes in there. Uh, and then the county landfill site actually was, uh, what replaced, uh, this property. Um, so Sussman Supply had acquired it, didn't operate it up until, uh, a few years ago. Um, and we, uh, had looked at it, uh, knowing that there really wasn't going to be any other opportunities uh, for redevelopment of the site, uh, and looked into, uh, state, uh, because knowing it was a brownfield site, uh, knowing that there was a desire to see former city dumps and, you know, municipal sites like that converted into playfields. And so the state actually asked what is called a brownfield playfield program. Uh, we looked into that, uh, which spurred our concept of being able to put in used baseball softball fields here in addition to making this playable. Uh, for like, uh, souvenir for Penn College to be able to use. Penn College will have, uh, their baseball program there along with their women's softball program there as well. So, um, we're in the process right now of pulling all this together, getting the financing in place. This is one of the key elements, uh, for us to be able to do this first phase of it. We are working with EEP. We've actually are, uh, once we are completed with this project, we will receive act two clearance uh, from the site, uh, for the site which will, uh, make us, uh, clear of all, any of the issues that may come from that property. The good thing is, uh, we brought in a firm back in two thousand twenty, uh, BAI, which is an environmental assessment firm. We came in, did over sixty-four holes throughout the twenty-eight acres and found that there was actually nothing, uh, for us to be concerned about with the property. That is one of the key things for the act two clearance uh, to be issued. Um, and actually in terms of methane, uh, which is one of the things that people always question. This is the type of debris that was underneath there, which is more, uh, home construction materials, uh, from the Agnes flood. Um, methane was not found, uh, at top side, uh, when they did the boring. Uh, they actually had to drop them into the holes to get rid of methane readings at all. So we were very pleased with the fact that this was for the most part, a very clean site from that aspect of it, uh, with it being, uh, in place for over fifty years. One of the other key, key things uh, that we found is it was noted there was a three-foot cap. That's the minimum. Actually, there's, uh, a number of areas throughout the property where there's a nine-foot cap of the property. So we're pleased to be able to see that, uh, we shouldn't be seeing, uh, significant settling over the years as well because it's been run over by significant heavy equipment over those decades as well. So.
Was it a long time dump or was it just a dump at, from Agnes till?
No, it was just, it was seen dumped for a number of years.
Okay.
Um, and like the what filled it up was Agnes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chamber did their homework when they decided what type of facility to put at this location. It was best to put soccer there, basketball. And their studies showed it was best to be utilized as ball fields. Uh, anyone who's been, uh, associated with any kind of travel ball knows how big it is across the country. It's been that way for over thirty years. It needs to grow. Um, if you go up to Cooperstown, they use the Cooperstown facilities this way. And there's teams from all over the nation to visit Cooperstown. Uh, from your studies, it shows that it can bring three to four hundred thousand visitors to this location. We have Little League right here, so they would go over and visit Little League such as they visit Cooperstown. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a great concept. Uh, the studies show that it's going to bring a lot of visitors to the area. And, uh, hopefully some of those visitors will relocate here and increase our population. So excited about it. Uh, Penn College is invested in it. They've, uh, made a financial commitment to it for their ball field. And so they have a home, Lycoming has a home now in Brandon Park. You know, with their ball field out there, this gives Penn, Penn College a, a location for their ball fields. Uh, I've been out to Duke Boys several times uh, for state tournaments. And if you go out to Duke Boys areas, uh, they have all their fields chirped. And, uh, they have similar concept. Uh, they have the Division Three College World Series out there. Uh, so it's, it's a great opportunity to bring a lot more here with these type of ball fields. So we're excited about it. And it, and it's a great location because really what we're going to do with that location, uh, which is sit there and, and when you go up the highway, you stare at rocks. Nobody wants.
It, it's unfortunately, um, not the best image for the city. Uh, as you enter from the north and as you leave from, uh, south, I mean, you look at it, uh, it's straight adjacent to a very highly, uh, sought after institution for higher learning. And you've got this blighted property sitting there, uh, right now. We're anxious and I know there are others, uh, as well that are anxious to be able to get this done. Fortunately, you know, COVID hit, we had acquired the property at the end of twenty nineteen with plans to be able to have this done a lot sooner, but, uh, we had to refocus our efforts to be able to deal with businesses, being able to get them through the pandemic and uh, we're able to finally be able to turn our efforts to, to get this finished last, at the end of last year to be able to start moving this forward. So.
Great. Someone should tell Scott when he's driving up the highway, he should be staring at the road, not at the rocks.
I'm the driver that goes like forty-five left turn signal on the left, the left lane. You're the one giving me the finger because I drive too slow.
I mean, you wouldn't know that because you're staring at the rock.
He says you'll never get arrested for speed the way you drive. Still have the gray hair yet.
Oh, I think it's a. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You.
Five two, uh, Mike, like the official personnel actions.
Yes, good morning. Uh, let's see, uh, in the sheriff's office, Mark Storms, deputy sheriff, uh, one fourteen qualified. Uh, twenty-two sixty-three per hour, eighty hours per pay period effective date, October fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
That's the time we recess, commissioner's public meeting for the salary board. I mean, sorry, we're just dying.
Okay, um, vote to approve the salary board minutes from the October tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye. Vote to approve the following salary board action. Um, at the prison, delete the full-time, one full-time LPN position from the T G edge.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time we'll adjourn the salary board. We convene the commissioner's public meeting. Personnel actions.
Morning again. Uh, approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions as outlined here in attachment A. Uh, an adult probation, Alexandria Orifus, adult probation officer, AP twenty-one eighty-one per hour. Eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated start date, October twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, facilities management, Mary Peterman, custodial worker, pay grade three, thirteen dollars, point four one two eight cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. The next two are just, um, uh, title reclassifications, uh, human resources, Aubrey Friday, uh, HR support specialist. Pay grade five, fifteen seventy-five per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period effective date, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, also in the human resources office, uh, Michael Hagan, director of human resources. Pay grade fourteen, eighty-seven thousand, seven fifty per year. Seventy-five hours per pay period effective date, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the prison, Mercedes Beck, licensed practical nurse, pay grade ten, thirty dollars per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually. Anticipated start date, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. In the public defender's office, Kristen Rantella, paralegal, pay grade seven, nineteen dollars, point six five, seven five cents per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. And the final one in the public defender's office, Giovanna Daniele, uh, assistant public defender, union position sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars per year, seventy-five hours per pay period. Uh, anticipated transfer date, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
And Mike, just a note, um, your position's just change the title.
Yes, both of ours in our office just changed the title. Everything stayed the same.
No change. Sorry.
Just restructuring titles from the, uh, a couple of months back of restructuring the HR office.
Thank you. Now, a motion except.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Comments or questions?
I just want to say like Aubrey, the other person in the HR department, it was, uh, an intern we got from Career Link. And, um, now that she's been promoted, because, you know, she's done so well and she's up her intern time, she's moving up the ladder, I guess. And now we've got another intern, um, Hayden from Career Link. Uh, we're thankful to them for the relationship that we had. They sent us some really good people. Um, not just in HR, but in other departments. And, uh, it's really working out well for us.
Really well. Yes, really well.
And like, how many guys, a good, a good place to. And like coming guys, a good, a good place to do an internship for anyone who's interested. Often often hired several people through the years, internships. So we encourage the colleges or anyone to reach out for internship.
Absolutely, yeah, it's a, it's the bad, it's kind of treated as secret because it really shouldn't be. Um, but it's a, a wealth of, uh, for us and for the individual to. And you're not gonna, not gonna be like working at a corporation where everything is just set. It's a, a moving pendulum and I told them when they both started, I'm like, you, you're coming here for the same exact thing day after day. This job isn't for you. So, and they uh, I, I think they can all attest to that, especially the one in the public defender's office.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, first, get a motion.
Second.
All fair side. Thank you. Okay, well, recess commissioners, public meetings, it's time for the board of assessments revisions, we're assessments revisions at this time. Good morning, Brooke.
I have two real estate exemptions for you. Do you want to vote on them one, one at a time?
Yeah.
My recommendations will be to deny on both of them. And I'll explain why. Um, the first one is for West Con Jehovah Witnesses. This parcel is split into parcels. One part is tax exempt, which is the church and parking lot. And it's five point three, three acres. That's all tax exempt. The tactical part is the water retention pond in the hillside. That part is not used for church purposes, and that is the reason why it is taxable. It is no different than, for example, Wildwood Cemetery. The cemetery itself is a tax exempt, but all their woods, they have sixty-nine acres of woods that, that's taxable. We have Fair Lawn Church Community up in like coming township, their church, social hall, et cetera. And the land sitting underneath it is exempt. They have forty-four acres. It's taxable. So this is the reason why this part is taxable. Um, Jehovah Witnesses, they filed a real estate exemption. The reason why it should be exempt is it's unusable. I understand it's unusable, but it must be used for church purposes. I did call Mr. Huber. Is Mr. Huber here? I left the message that he has the right to come and speak. He, he was notified and everything, so if he's not here, he's not here. So my recommendation is to deny it and let it remain as taxable.
See online that.
Not soon.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to. Reject, correct?
Yes. Motion deny it then.
Motion.
And I will make the motion. I will make the motion to deny.
I'll second.
Uh, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, next one.
Okay, the next one is for Whaley Junior Private Express Trust. Keep eye on, just making you aware, in twenty twenty-one, he filed a real estate exemption claiming he was a micro nation. This property is a two-story duplex house where he resides on this property. He just states he is not private agency. I called him, his voicemail box was full. I sent a letter, but he had the right to come here to explain why it should be tax exempt. My recommendation is deny it.
It's really online. I have motion to deny, uh.
Yeah, I will make the motion to deny.
Willie's a private exception.
I will second that.
Motion second, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I just want to make you aware, I have two more real estate exceptions that will be coming at the end of the month. And then we'll be done with real estate exemptions for the year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, during the board of assessments revisions at this time, we reconvene to commissioners' public meeting for action items. Danny, get the, get off.
Yep.
That's where in the ball field, baseball.
You are, yes. Morning again, commissioners. Ready? Okay. Uh, I am seeking a vote to approve the Brownfield revolving loan fund agreement with the Williams Park Ballpark Inc. In the amount of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars pending document.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Questions or comments on this, so. Fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And you also have nine, too?
I do, yes. This is a vote to ratify um, the Arc Power Grant. I am pleased to announce that the county has been awarded an ARC, um, so Appalachian Regional Commission, hard to say. Um, it's a grant for the Riverwalk Extension and the grant is in the amount of one million eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, hello, that's a lot today. Um, so yeah, so it's an Arc Power Grant. Um, and it's for the Riverwalk Extension specifically for the part from Elm, from Elm Park to the region. Um, this funding will leverage county investment and leverage funds, and we're hoping to hear um, of a couple other grant announcements this fall.
So this is allowed for the Riverwalk's extension?
Yep, yep. It's part of the, the overall funding package we're pursuing. Um, it is five million, approximately a five million dollar project, and it'll complete four miles of the Riverwalk Extension. And she knows a top ten trail gap and will connect um, right near um, the ballpark.
We continue to hear the praise for the Riverwalk, how much of attraction is to our area and heavily used. Thank you. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All fair side.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nine point three.
Forest?
Let's see, I'm gonna do it.
Forest. Being a little busy these days.
Yeah. What? They feel like you're coming out.
Nothing much, twenty days away. Or nineteen. Commissioner, seeking your approval, uh, for revised change order number two. The contract with H and P Construction to correct the mathematical error on the original change order number two. This is a twenty twenty-four budgeted, pre-budget item. This is ADA compliance changes that are pulling places. Change, um, the amount was two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. To two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars or total increase of two thousand four hundred and thirty-one.
And the voter registration, our services continues to work with the D O J on the ADA compliances. Part of it. Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Or John?
Morning commissioners.
Morning.
Um, before you is a grant monitoring agreement between the county and the LeComing County Fair Association. Um, this agreement is for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to construct an approximately six hundred thousand square foot. Our six thousand square foot pole, pole building. Um, the structure will be used to show animals and, and host agricultural events throughout the year. Um, and it is funded through the county's American Rescue Plan dollars, which commissioners set aside. Certain amounts specifically for agricultural purposes and supporting the community. Supporting the agricultural community in like home account. So this is part of a, a menu of, of, of different projects that we're working on. Um, and I have here today James Reed and, and Brett Taylor. James Reed is the president. Chairman of the Fair Association. Brett Taylor is obviously the, the planning commission chairman, and he's been helping to. Come up with the menu of projects.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen, for both of you attending today. Would you like to come up and say a word? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the current board of commissioners for.
Please say, state your name.
Brett Taylor.
Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the current board of commissioners and the past board of commissioners for setting aside ARPA funds for the ag community. Created a committee of five people to review what we were going to use these funds for. And we really thought that it had to be multi-generational money. We couldn't, we could dole it out and it would create a stopgap today and nothing long range. Sit down, went through it, and we put a lot of thought into how can we deal with our youth? We wanted a big project and then multiple little projects. We put in money for a working facility for young farmers that can't afford to work their cattle safely. The new working facility will be delivered on Friday. We got that part moving. We put money forth for um, funding for. The Farm Bureau Association has a mobile ag lab, which, if anybody's ever familiar with it, you take it to the elementary schools. And they have a curriculum that leads up to it, so the kids will learn up to it. The mobile ag lab comes for a week and every kid gets to go in and use it and do onsite projects. Then they teach away from it. We used X amount of those dollars to fund that for the next three years, so that every kid in elementary school for the next three years in like coming county will get to use it. We have another grant set aside for ag in the classroom. So we will be able to do if there's kids or if there's teachers that want to do hydroponics or incubators or things like that, that we can put ag in the classroom. Which leads us all the way up to where we are today, and we wanted to do something. That a lot of kids could get a lot of use out of. And, and we looked around the community and we thought that the fairgrounds is a nonprofit that we could work with. We're going to get down there. We're going to take down two buildings, build one brand new one that the kids can house their animals in. For the fair week. But outside of that, it will give us a place that if there is a clinic, that some nonprofit wants to have in ag, they can go there and use the building for the clinic. We have made arrangements with the fair board that being this is a grand opportunity upfront. That there is a cost restriction moving down the road, so that it's an affordable place that kids can have. So they did one down there this spring. They had a hundred and some kids show up from all over the state. We want this to last a very long time, and we think we've put in some bylaws and such in place. But it's not forgotten today or tomorrow that the money that this board of commissioners has put forward will be lasting. For many generations coming forward.
Thank you, Brett. When we sat, when we sat down, our money's, we received them. You know, this one-time monies, we often see how government wastes monies. They do projects that go nowhere. And uh, the three of us at the time stressed that these have to be generational projects that could help. You know, water sewer that the act, you know, we, we broke it down into different categories. And, and one thing I stressed was, you know, farmer is so important in America, the farmer is so important in Pennsylvania, especially like coming county. Got to remember our farmers and our agricultural community, and the other two commissioners at the time agreed. We put monies aside. Initially, it was what projects we could do. Uh, the five people that we put on this committee brought back great ideas. And we're excited about them. Uh, like you said, multi-generational use, and that's what we want.
Well, we thought if we went with kids first, you know, we can dole money into seventy-year-old farmers and we're going to get a little bit of time out of them. But if we put this money into the kids and get them started. It will, it will carry a lot longer distance than it can.
Yep, and, and young farmers is what, where it's at. We need young farmers.
One of the things we're really hoping, and we have talked to them quite extensively about to really help young farmers. Is maybe if we can get enough interest on East End County Farmers Market. That building will be used through the summer months for a farmer's market, which will bring another group, a complete different group than uses the Williamsport Farmers Market. Different group of farmers, different group of clientele, you know, something in the east end of the county to, to help bolster up the, the ag economy in that area.
We're happy that it has a multi-use other than just during the fair. But I'll say as a person who's not part of the agricultural community, um, who goes to the fair every year and, you know, who I have kids, that's their exposure. That's their one exposure to really farm, where they used to get to pet sheep and goats and pigs. And so it is a, uh, the, the county fair and, and the need for, for this building at the fairgrounds is um. For all kinds of kids, even not just the, the farm community kids who can use it all year, but like I said, my kids, that was their only exposure. And every time we would go to the fair, they would want to go see the animals every time.
And we're really hoping that the ag in the classroom stuff that we're putting some of this other funding to. Makes those kids think, the, the non-farm kids, it gets them to know where their food comes from, it gets them to know what's going to happen. And it gets them more comfortable as they get older with local agriculture.
The portable classroom thing is a wonderful idea.
Oh, and we bought, the other one was the headsets.
I was just gonna refer that.
Yeah.
Last night, the conservation district.
Yes.
They've come in now.
Yes.
We had a meeting last night and, and they've come in now to put the headsets on and like do a virtual.
They're a V R headset. They're a three D, and I'm not a gamer, but they're a three D headset you put on. And we have found oodles of free farm tours. And we actually have some grant money set aside to do local farm tours. So that we can take them to a classroom, we've got thirty-five of them. We can take them to a second grade classroom or a fifth grade classroom. Every kid in there can put it on. And we can walk them through a farm and, and we video them in three D. With three hundred and sixty degree, and as the kids look around, it follows with them. So we're really hoping that that spikes some interest also.
Yes, very, very.
And I was, I gotta tell you, I was against that at the beginning because I didn't understand. And, and the more we studied into it and the more we, we realized that that is going to be huge for some of these kids.
Yeah.
And for forestry, we can do, the forestry association has them, conservation associations have them, we can use them for any application at that point for kids.
You know, the virtual, they do it for law enforcement with the training with the sheriff here. You know, it, it's almost like, I mean, your pulse is going up as you're inhaling situations on how to handle it's training. And there's no reason why you can't transfer, transfer that over to fire and safety, EMS, the farming community. It, it makes it realistic so that they, they're actually experiencing them while they're sitting there.
And it's a lot easier to bring them all in and put them in a room like this and walk them through that is to schedule everybody and take them out onsite with biosecurity and whole nine yards. We can give them a, an up close and personal look at how, and, and fix some of the misconceptions. We had a group who were my farm on Saturday from Westmoreland County, and it was the first time they ever saw a chicken house. And I asked them all when we started in, before we get to the door, what do you think you're going to see? Well, there's a bunch of chickens in there and they're all in pens and the whole nine yards. They, seventy-five percent of the people, they were farmers, but from a different region, seventy-five percent of them had a. Misidea of what was inside of those buildings and how these animals. I think we can nip a lot of that in the bud. Yep, so great use of these ARPA dollars. Yes. I appreciate it. It will help generations.
Good morning commissioners. My name is James Rocky Reed. I'm president of LeComing County Fair. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the fair board for your support for the fair and what we're doing. And the fair's been there since eighteen sixty-eight, and we plan on being there that long in the future. So this truly will be multi-generational, and we'll be able to take it down the road. And we're hoping uh, to do everything Brett said, plus do something farm to table, farm to consumer. And we think that'll help out everyone in the county, not just agriculture, but it should help everyone, especially agriculture. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
Thanks, Rocky.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Uh, commissioner, seeking your approval on an amendment to yellow eye with chance aluminum. This simply just extends the closing date to thirty-one March, twenty twenty.
Yeah, I'll make that. And this uh, has to deal with the property of the farm across from the landfill, the remaining property.
Correct.
That uh, cancel aluminum is interested in purchasing. And as we move forward to try to work on agreement with them, uh, that would bring more manufacturing here and hundreds of jobs. So we hope that we can uh, work this out in the future. So it's an extension of the amendment to the O I letter of interest.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All, all fair side.
Aye.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to ratify the engagement letter with Ikman Consulting Services. This is a twenty twenty-four pre-budgeted item, and this is the valuation for county property that we have.
A little bit more detail about that?
This has to deal with trying to determine a, a value of the potential. Gas proceeds. Or attractive land that county. Technically owns, but is in the middle of a litigation over that ownership. This is one of the steps that we need to take for that litigation.
Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank for questions or comments? It was, will this original payment be due prior to the end of this year?
Will this, will this original payment be due prior to the end of this year?
And how much is that payment? Okay, so you're, yes, five thousand. All fair side?
Nine seven mine.
Um, then I have for you today, it's just to prove the sale for surplus property. This is a bunch of miscellaneous computer equipment that we had that were sold through municipal bid. And we were able to sell all that equipment for thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, great. It's good to get something for things that are sitting around surplus.
Yep, and it's easier than trying to dispose of it ourselves too.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Fair side?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, comment?
Um, the only guy I was gonna add, you mentioned whatever health care month this is. And, uh, yeah, about breast cancer awareness. I thought that talking was bigger. I was just at a, a function. I think it was last week that was put on by the, uh, the James V Brown Library. And it was a really nice event, and they had a, a writer on video who was speaking. And she was a New York Times bestselling author. She's sold a bunch of books. And she's not, she's not fifty. I'm gonna say she's late forties. And, and she talked about how she was diagnosed with breast cancer when she was forty-four. And she stressed that she had no symptoms. She had no health issues. She had nothing to alert her to it. Other than the fact that, you know, she went and did her annual mammogram and it was discovered and it was discovered early. And, you know, fortunately, she's, you know, she's gone through treatment and she's doing very well. But again, her stress to us was, you know, she talked about books and she talked about her writing and all this. But at the end of it, she stressed to us that she had no symptoms. She was young. I don't think her, I don't think she had a family history either. She's like, of all the things, I should not have had it. But she still went and got her annual screenings and she got early detection and now she's doing very well. So her message to everyone there was just go get your screenings. Don't wait for something to be wrong. Don't say, well, my family has no history of whatever. Don't, just go get your annual screenings because it it probably saved her life or, you know, close to it. And again, she was forty-four. So that was, that was kind of her message.
Yep, it's so important to get the screens, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to get busy and say, I don't have time for it, put it off. And, you know, even if you don't have family history, because, you know, your loved ones need you here and they want you here and your friends. So it's important that if you get these early detections and identify it, so critical.
I know, um, I did my first colonoscopy last year. I would say I was fifty-one when I did, because I think they tell you when you're fifty. I don't know. I thought, I thought fifty was, I was fifty-one when I did my first one. And after I did it, I made a joking Facebook post about it of how delightful my day was because it started with a colonoscopy. And I got a, I got a message from a buddy of mine that I, I went to college with. And he said, you know, my, my first one's next month. And after he got it, he messaged me and said he had like twelve nodules or something that they found. And because he got the colonoscopy, he got to be treated and before it became something more dangerous. So again, we got just, they're, they're not delightful. But it's, it's, you know, the, the, putting them off the, is, is just, oh, yes, it's, it's an awkward day. And, you know, it is what it is, but the peace of mind of knowing that you're okay or the ability to treat if you're not okay and early detection of some port.
Um, I'd like to throw a few thank yous out there. We had a wonderful day in our community yesterday, but it takes a lot of people to be involved. So we had our vice president candidate show up at Liberty Arena. Uh, most people don't see the backside of that. So it starts with the airport and the security of our airport. And then a passageway from that airport into downtown Williamsport. And so I, I thank the people of, of our, of LeComming County that were displaced yesterday in their travels because I know that's very difficult for a lot of people. So I thank them for, for their support of, of what the Secret Service had to do in our community, because I know it's difficult for people. A lot of people don't care that he showed up. So affecting their travels was very important to them. So I appreciate those people. I appreciate what the Secret Service did. They did a phenomenal job. You know, Scott and I were there and able to witness just how they perform. And I felt they were top-notch. Obviously, there's been, you know, a lot of negative about Secret Service lately. But what I saw here in Williamsport was phenomenal. I thank all our local law enforcement that also helped in navigating everybody through our community yesterday. And I thank the senator for, for taking his time, whether you're Republican or Democrat, I don't think matters when it's just nice that a candidate of any, at that level, is willing to show up in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. Obviously, we're not a big community. So I, I, I give him a thank you for taking the time to show up here.
Yeah, the state and local authorities were incredible. You know, the city of Williamsport, they had the streets properly taken care of. Disruption to the downtown area, I think, was, was isolated and minimal. Uh, and again, thank you to everyone in the community that had the patience. I know a lot of people had different opinions. And, you know, there, there are times in, in life that you have to make exceptions to go a different way. And, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience for some people. We understand that with schedules. We just want to thank everybody for their patience and cooperation, whether they agree with the person arriving or not. Again, it's, it's when everybody in the community works together, it, it's, it's the spirit of the community that gets it done. And it just shows that, he made a comment that when he got off the plane yesterday, uh, he looked up at the mountain and thought, wow, what a beautiful area. The leaves changed. What a beautiful area to live in. And we often get that from people that are visitors. President Trump was here. He did the same thing when he was down at the airport. He looked over at the mountain, made remarks about the mountain. I know when I'm a host over Little League, the visitors that come in. I mean, even people from Hawaii, you think about how beautiful Hawaii is, how gorgeous it is. And I've talked to people from Hawaii that say your mountains are beautiful. It's just a beautiful area. What a great area to live. And so they hear those kind of comments from visitors and visitors that have, you know, beautiful sceneries in their backyards. It's, it's, it's a compliment and it's just here, it's good to hear that. Because that's why, one of the reasons why we live here. We have a beautiful valley. We're blessed to be able to be here.
And we forget that because we see it every day. So it is awesome. And so when Scott made the comment earlier about, you know, we're building the ball fields and, and people are gonna come with their kids and play ball and maybe they'll look at our area. That's one of the things that they look at. They look at the beauty. I mean, I've talked to so many people, business people over the years that for one reason or another flew into LeComming County and saw how beautiful it is and then decided to move here because of what we have. We forget it because we're, we're born, most of us are, you know, have been here for way too long, so.
Where they come back and buy a cabin?
Hawaii is beautiful too, but it's just a lot cheaper to live here. But I, and obviously, you know, Vance was here yesterday because Pennsylvania is such an important state in this election. But, yeah, as you mentioned, it's, it is neat historically that, you know, that, that Trump was here a couple of years ago. And that was for a different purpose because we had a special election in kind of an off-season. But I was telling, I ran into someone I knew on the street yesterday and I said, well, I remember when Sarah Palin was here back when, when she was the vice presidential candidate. So we've had a lot of, of neat little interactions that we all get because we're Pennsylvanian, we're swing state, it matters. But it's still, it's neat for our area. It's neat for the, for our kids. And, and it certainly brings attention to every one of the, you know, just kind of the importance of what's going on.
You know, President Obama was here at LeComming College. Dick Cheney was here. Vice President Cheney was here. He was the hanger down at the airport. And, and if you go over to Gen 80 and look at the pictures on the wall, there have been several presidents that have visited LeComming County and Williamsport. So we've been blessed to have different candidates here for presidents and vice presidents here. So it is an important area and Pennsylvania is a critical state. But to hear the compliments on the beauty of the environment we live in is, is puts a smile on your face.
Didn't, wasn't Sarah Palin at Bunnings Field? Isn't that where she spoke?
I thought she spoke at Bunnings Field. I didn't realize she was here.
Great, thank you.
So if anybody that couldn't hear him in the, in the back that's watching us, that's JD Vance, Williamsport PA on YouTube. And you can see the whole speech yesterday.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any? Any from the audience first? Any comments from, other comments from the audience? Any online? If we do, ask you to please keep your comments to county issues and keep them brief, please.
Hey, Thomas Adams. Good morning Commissioners in LeComming County. I realize there is a push for pipeline CO2 storage. This is an extremely dangerous and very foolish practice. I hope LeComming County have the responsibility, public safety and of affecting our farmers and model with our constitutional authority to disallow subjectivity in the cattle. Think it is a travesty. Our nation is not honoring this as we have for over two hundred years. This comes from a purposeful attack writing of American history. Many people are brainwashed or just ignorant of his contributions to the founding of America and his commitment to the gospel and the biblical foundations for governance. He's great, great adversity from the Hannibal tribe. Uh, like the secrets. Good morning Commissioners. Back to Tom Adams. Cannibalized the ship's crew of whom he left after the ship ran aground on a return trip to Spain for supplies. Good morning from the very friendly Tano tribe. This is only a snippet of his challenges and success with several from the Tanos that begged to visit Spain somewhere, may part of the royal court. The short Hannibalism. Cannibalism. Caribs, Caribbean. Don't worry about Caribbean artists. Colorant. Columbus had to wipe them out or make slaves of them, save many people's lives and other explorers' lives. Civilizations are polar opposites in values, morality and practices. Are annihilation or slavery. Evaluating of human life is a core issue that challenges today, hopefully before it gets to a point of disregard. In realizing how precious without life, there is no liberty. There is a pursuit of happiness. There are many other great things Columbus did to protect life and safety, security. So I'm playing for the agricultural.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
He is right about the origin of the word cannibal. I didn't know that. Island, Caribes, Caribes.
So I'll give him that. I don't think Columbus was a great guide, but, you know, we'll leave that. That's a discussion for another time.
Okay, we've completed our agenda, so we will meet back here next Thursday at ten AM. Thank you.